Welcome tonight to the Candidates Forum for our Clay County Candidates. Our first candidates will be for the County Commission. And there are three candidates running for District Four. One of them cannot be here tonight, and he left me a statement to read. So we have two candidates here, and we're starting right off with those two. Following that, we'll take a short break, and then we have the four candidates for County Sheriff, following that. This forum, as most of the forums in Morehead, is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Red River Valley, of which most of the volunteers you see out there are from. It is also sponsored by our wonderful friends here at the library. And this year, for the first time, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Morehead is sponsoring, co-sponsoring the forum, and we have a couple volunteers from that. My name is Les Spocky. I'm a former board member with the League of Women Voters. Yes, the League of Women Voters does have men in their organization. It is open to all. It is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that's goal is to educate the voters and make sure we make good decisions when we go into the poll. We also really want to encourage everyone to go vote. Next Tuesday is the primary in Clay County, so make sure you pick your candidates tonight and go vote on Tuesday. The format will be, we will give each of the candidates a minute to do an opening statement. Then you have been writing questions. I will have those, and we'll start asking, oh, I have them already, start asking those. Then each of the candidates will have a two-minute response time. We have Carol sitting in front. It will help remind them when two minutes is up. And then there will be a two-minute closing at about seven, 10 or so. Did I get everything? Carol? Anybody who has questions out there, you can pick up a card at the back of the room and a pen, pencil, and write down your questions. First of all, Kevin Campbell, who's a candidate also, said he was out of town this week and asked me if I would read the statement of his phone, which is as follows. "I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me to this forum. Unfortunately, I'm out of town this entire week. I have been honored to serve the people of District Four and all of Clay County for the past fifteen and a half years. Sorry, I cannot be there to answer the public's questions this evening. Anyone wishing to get more information on my experience and public service record or would like to ask questions of me, they can do so on my Facebook page, Re-Elect Kevin Campbell for Clay County Commission, District Four, or sending an email to camphouse, C-A-M-P-H-O-U-S-E, at cableone.net." Once again, thank everyone in attendance and everyone watching this broadcast. I humbly ask for your support in the primary on August 14th. Thank you. We will start with Mary Daly, and we will alternate questions after that. So your opening statement.
Very good. Thank you, Les. Good evening. I would like first to thank the League, the library, and Beyond the Yellow Ribbon for providing this opportunity for the voters to learn about who I am and what I'm all about. Currently, I serve on the Morehead City Council, and it was not an easy decision to make to leave it. My decision to make the move from representing the fine citizens of Morehead's First Ward to expanding my constituency to represent the entire Fourth District of Clay County was not made lightly or without great deliberation and consultation. As a resident of Clay County for almost a quarter of a century, I've seen the victorious struggles with gang activities in the mid-'90s and serial flooding. In more recent years, I have seen some less-than-victorious struggles. A growing culture of change is in our county, and we must meet the needs. And I offer the county someone who has been on the ground working with it. One of the things I am most consistent with during my tenure on the council, I represent the people who elected me to be their voice.
Thank you, Mary. Al Gordon, please.
Thank you, Les, and thank you also to the League of Women Voters and anybody responsible for putting this on, to all you people for coming and listening to us speak. First of all, I'd like to give you just a little insight for the County Board. The County Board is a five-member board that establishes policy and oversight of the budget and the oversight of the county operations, and that's for the entire county. Now with that, that's a huge responsibility. And with that responsibility, I think a person should have a vast background to look at some of these issues that arise in our county and the different departments. My background, I have a business administration background, have a minor in accounting, also in law enforcement. I spent nineteen years in property management, traveling throughout the country in different properties as far as low-income properties, property for the elderly, affordable properties. And also, I spent nine years at NDSU as Assistant Director of Housing, which is very, very, as you might say, policy-oriented. So with that, I believe that I have the background to fulfill this obligation for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. By the way, I have only two questions submitted by the audience. Certainly with forty-plus people in here, we can get more than that. Thank you. Al, you get the next question or the first question. What is the single most important issue facing Clay County?
Well, I believe the most important issue facing Clay County, bar none, is going to be the upcoming budgets. I think that with the need of the new jail, the law enforcement, I understand that that's been taken care of through the sales taxes and things like that. But we also have new staffing that's going to have to be implemented within the county. We have new developments that's going to have to be taken care of. We're having, I'm not going to say a shrinking budget, but we're going to have a budget that's going to be, need to spread over many, many different areas, and that's going to get thin. And I understand that people have been touting that Clay County is the fourth-largest-growing county in the state of Minnesota. However, you can't really get a clear answer on that. I don't see the development. Housing starts in Morehead or in Clay County are pretty much nil right now at this point. We've had builders, builders that basically have nothing going on in the county. What we need to do is we need to sustain growth. We have to have economic growth. We have to figure out a way to get people coming in. We have the school systems that I believe attract people, but we have to get people to come into this side of the river, and we have to continue that growth. And that's what I see, is the sustaining of the continuation of that growth to sustain the budget problems that we're going to have in the future.
Thank you, Al. Mary, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please do.
What is the single most important issue facing Clay County?
I would concur on the budget. It needs to be sustainable. We've got an economy right now that is doing well. However, as we look at the decline of farm prices and how that could be affecting the Red River Valley, housing is actually pretty good in parts of Morehead. We're growing quite rapidly, particularly in the south part. I know Holly is building some housing as well. And I think that that expands to include the labor force in this area and also dealing with what we have to deal with, making that budget work for things we need, particularly the growth in mental health issues, the opioid issues. And it's very difficult to do that without a balance of the budget that is strong enough to maintain the services that we need to continue providing to our residents.
Thank you, Mary. Question number two, and you get that one together. It's kind of funny with just two people here. Normally, we have four or five of them up here, and I've got to get used to that. What made you decide to take this on in addition to or instead of what you're currently doing?
Which one of us?
You are first.
Okay. It was a tough decision. I have really enjoyed being on city council. It's been five years of growth, learning, and good, bad, and wonderful experiences. But I think that I would like to do more good for more people. And with that, I see the needs. As a twenty-five-year teacher, I work with the services the county provides, whether it's transportation, maintaining the roads, or family and social services, or foster programs, or one of the fastest-growing populations I am seeing among students, and it's a sad trend, but the reality is that growth is in the population of students whose parents are in jail or prison. And they need things that we are not completely meeting. With the opioid issues, we need treatment time for the addicts while they're in jail or whatever, but we need prison for the dealers. We need to treat the addicts, incarcerate the dealers, get them off the street. My choice to run is because of the resources that are available and also, as I said, because I see what we've got, what we need. We've got good things going on here in Clay County. We've got good water. We want to keep it good. We need to protect our aquifers. We need to make sure that we are welcoming to businesses and industries in our communities. And I think we've seen quite a bit of growth with a lot of potential, a lot of exciting things going on in Clay County in various places, not just one in particular. An example of that would be the excitement of what's going on downtown Morehead. Right now, we see a lot of multi-use buildings and also refurbishing of buildings, you know, as far as repurposing and things like that. And I see the need for teamwork. One of my concerns is that our county commission does not reflect the population of Clay County.
Thank you, Mary. I will repeat the question. What made you decide to take this on in addition to or instead of what you're currently doing?
Thank you.
Interesting question.
Yeah, it is. Well, four years ago, as many of you may know, I also ran for the County Commission. And at that time, the current commissioner was vacillating back and forth whether he was going to run or not, and he had almost made a decision that he wasn't going to. So I started looking into the possibilities and what the county commissioners actually do. And I found that my background fits into that very well. And also, as I went out and I talked to people, not just in District Four but throughout the county, I heard several, several times that they were not being represented in which, in the way that they felt that they should be. They weren't being heard in the way they should be. Information wasn't getting back to them. So I decided to run anyway, even though the commissioner did decide to run again. Well, through the course of the four years, I've talked to several people. Again, I've been encouraged several times to throw my hat in the ring again. And again, as I walked through the neighborhoods in North Morehead, I'm sorry to say that there are several people that feel that the Morehead City Councilperson that represents them has not gotten back to them. I've talked to one lady that told me that she left twelve messages to the city councilperson in the north ward that has not gotten back to her. That's a passion of mine, that a person, if they have something to ask for, that you get back to them. If they want an answer, if you don't know it, you get back to them. You represent the people as a whole. And the only way that you can represent the people is if you talk to them. And you can't talk to them not by answering the phone and not by dodging questions. You sit up in front of these forums, you answer your phone calls, you talk to people directly. So my passion is working for the working men and women of Clay County and having their voice heard to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Al, you get the next question. We flip back and forth here. If elected, what would be your first cause you would champion?
Well, again, you have to look at the oversight situation for Clay County. We have to figure out a way to continue development in Clay County, whether that means putting together a little bit of a coalition, that we can go out and try and attract businesses to see what's holding up businesses. Growth, it's really a strange thing because you can measure growth in different ways. Again, they say Clay County is the fourth-growing county in the state of Minnesota, but they don't actually come out. Now, growth can be developed by per capita personal income, and Clay County has increased by 4.4% in that area. But now with that, where are these people working? Seventy-seven percent of our workforce in Morehead and at Clay County work in Fargo. So our per capita income, is that Minnesota growth? It's growth for the people that are living here, but it does not necessarily mean that our county is growing. And I don't know if there really is that much development. Sure, we do have some things going on downtown, and we have apartment being built, but we have 14% vacancy rate. Them apartment buildings are not full yet, and them shops are not full on the first floor of them buildings yet. Now, I hope they will be, and I hope that we can do anything we can to precipitate people moving in. But we have some big hurdles to overcome, and development is going to be one of my causes that I really work hard for.
Thank you, Al. Mary, if elected, what would be, what would be one of the first causes you would champion?
I think one of the first causes I would champion would be taking a look at the city budget and looking at the departments to see which services are being duplicated and what we could incorporate into the same departments as far as a lack of communication between department heads or service providers. I think that it's really hard to pinpoint one in particular, but I would take a look at that, oversee the entire operations, just take a look at what's going on, maybe check into the county attorney's office. Their case loads are extremely high, and I think there's probably a need there for some more attorneys. Another issue would be tied into that would be back to that budget and overlapping, hoping that we look at the operations and find areas that could be streamlined to make that a sustainable budget, to make sure that there isn't money being wasted on things and that we're putting money where it needs to be, places like public safety, public, like, permanent flood protection. And also, I'd like to see more going into legislative presence. We need some lobbyists, more so than what we've got. I think a lot of entities have someone hired for that specific purpose, and I think that it really pays off in the end. I think that with that oversight and overseeing of it, I think there could be other agencies that could partner to share the responsibilities and the services as well.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, you get the next question. And as I read it, you're going to say, that's a yes or no question, okay? However, candidates, I do not want simply a yes or no. You can answer yes and no, but then you have to give us an explanation of why you answered it yes or no. Here's the question. Does the county have enough law enforcement personnel for the increasing population? And Mary, that's yours first.
That's a very good question. Right offhand, I would say no. I've done a number of ride-alongs with the Morehead Police and have had a number of experiences with them. I think with the change in demographics, whether it is the increase in the homeless population or possibly new Americans who aren't familiar with the culture or the laws or the rules, I think that we need more to reach out. And as I said, we've got our law enforcement in so many places that twenty years ago, they were not. We didn't have police officers in school. Our school resource officers, there's one. I know at Dilworth-Glyndon-Felton, we've got two sites with an elementary at each site, a high school at one, a middle school at another, and we have one law enforcement officer to go between the two. I think that we're spreading them a bit thin, especially in light of the change in the culture, not just in Clay County but throughout our country. So I would say absolutely not. And I think we need to make sure that not only do we have the personnel, but that they have the equipment and training that they need to do their job to protect and serve the population of our community. I think that's very important. So I think that I would say no. We need to talk to them. You know, how many do you need? I know that other communities have been vocal as far as pay scale and things like that. And I know that in Morehead, in the city, we have added a number of police officers. And I think as far as countywide, when you look at the geographic space, that's a lot of territory for one officer to cover.
Thank you. Al, same question. Does the county have enough law enforcement personnel for the increasing population? And yes or no will not be your complete answer. Okay, thank you.
Well, how about, I don't know. No. With that...
If you want to finish it that way.
I'm going to say, Les, I worked for the county, Clay County Sheriff's Department, for fourteen years, very familiar with the operation, but I have not been familiar with the operation within the last fifteen, twenty years. This is going to be kind of tough for me to say, but I would work, it's part of the job. It's part of the job that says the oversight of the budget and the county operations. And part of that county operations is the sheriff's department, and it's every department. And I would definitely sit down with the head of that department, and I would spend some time out there, and I would see what's happening. I know Morehead has been short, and if you talk to them now, I believe they're still short on police officers. I don't know if the county's in that situation. But I know one thing, before we hire any more deputies in the county, we're going to have some pretty candid conversations, because I know that there's areas that can be shored up there. Until we have a person out of an office that's been sitting there for fifteen years, is supposed to be doing police work, and he's selling real estate on the county time, we're going to take care of things. And we're going to make sure that everybody's doing their job. And if they need more people on the streets, we'll get them more people on the streets. We're not going to have a ration of crime out there. We're going to protect our citizens. We're going to protect the area. But everybody's going to be doing their job. We aren't going to have people running down to Minneapolis in county cars, going to personal weddings, taking their family and smashing them up, and coming back and having the county pay for it. That's not going to happen on my watch. I'm going to look over. We're going to talk to people, and it's not going to be a slipshod operation. I'm not a micromanager, but you know what? When we're spending the county's money and the people's money out there, it's time that we shore some things up before we increase people on the street.
Thank you, Al. This question I like, so I'm going to do it because I'm the moderator. We know that not all issues are solved at the city level. We know all issues are not solved at the county level. So what kind of legislative, Al, you're first on this one, what kind of legislative priorities would you like to see as our goal in respect to the county? This is state legislative priorities. What would you advocate at state level, in other words?
Well, I think that one thing that's really holding us back is our state income taxes. You know, in the past, I think that when you take a look at things, things kind of evened out between property taxes on the Minnesota side, we paid much less than on the Fargo side. Well, you know, with the current new assessment program that came out, things kind of went up a little bit on that end, but our income taxes haven't dropped. So Fargo's here, and we're creeping up. That little boost that Morehead and this side of the river had is going away. We're going to have to look at income taxes. I also think we're going to have to figure out a way to look at farm, agricultural land taxes. We have people in the county paying $47 to $53 an acre for agricultural land. It's the highest anywhere in the area. And we have to find out why that is and what we can do. Because I tell you what, if these markets hit like they have been hitting and they continue, and who knows how long it will be continuing, it just will not be the farmers that are going to be hurting. Go out to Titan right now and see how many big machines they're selling. You go to talk to any of the ag people and see what's happening out there. If we don't get a hold on some of this, we're going to be in deep trouble, and that's not going to sustain the budget the way it is. So that will be a priority, is to talk to the legislators to see where we can go with agricultural taxes and with income taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, would you like me to repeat that?
Sure.
Sure, I will. What kind of legislative priorities would you like to see at our state level with respect to the county?
Thank you.
What can the state do to help us?
One of the things I'd like to see the state address is infrastructure, not just road maintenance, not just road construction, but also water, solid waste. Solid waste is becoming quite an issue because the markets for the recyclables has declined greatly. Right now, it is much cheaper to make a new plastic bottle than to take one that's already there, recycle it, and create something new. So that's a problem. We need, you know, at the legislative level to explore that. With infrastructure, I would also include water in the regard to sewer. That's getting to be a large concern in areas that are growing. But also broadband internet. Some of our rural people have a very difficult time getting broadband internet at a decent price. Some of them are paying a fortune for access to the internet. And that would tie even into our farmers, because as we know, today's farming is very high-tech, and it is, right now, low-profit. And with them being in the out parts of the country, access to broadband is essential as well. So I would like to see that, and I would like to see, as I said, some lobbying done for Clay County in that regard, because I think many times, those in St. Paul think that I-94 drops off somewhere near St. Cloud, and I know they're always quite surprised when they get out here to the western part of the state, that there is life here, and it's very, very, you know, vital, that we have the same access that the Twin Cities Metro does. So I would like to see more legislation directing, whether it's bonding or whatever, toward infrastructure.
Thank you, Mary. I'm adding a question here, and then we're going to go to the final question. I understand the county administrator retired recently, Brian Berg, and we have a new county commissioner. If I'm wrong, please correct me. And I think he's started or is about to start.
Administrator.
He has started?
Administrator.
Administrator. What did I say?
Administrator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Administrator, that's what I meant. Yes, he has started. Okay. How do you see your role with the new administrator? Mary, you're up.
Thank you. I think this is a really exciting time for Clay County. We've got a lot of fresh eyes, fresh voices, and fresh thoughts. We've got a new county administrator. We're going to have a new sheriff. We've, I could go all the way down the list, a new head of juvenile facility, and it's a great time for a new county commissioner with some new ideas, new vision. And I think it would be great to work with someone as they come in and bring these ideas and experiences together, because these experiences are not status quo. And I think that's one thing that we need here in Clay County. We've been doing business the same way for the past how many years? Brian Berg is a heck of an act to follow, and I got to admire Steve for jumping in there, because Brian's an amazing man, and I would like to be a part of this team as we take Clay County into the future.
Thank you. Al, how do you see yourself working with the new county administrator? Thanks, Jenny.
Again, I think that it's a real, a real exciting time for Clay County. You have a lot of department heads that are going to be turning over, and I think it's going to be a good time for Clay County. New brings growth. It brings new ideas. It brings, it brings a fresh look to everything. And I believe with the current position that both Ms. Daly and I are running for, that it would be a good opportunity for a new commissioner to work with that new county administrator. I think it'd be very important to... administrator. I think it'd be very important to work hand-in-hand with him, to get to know the system just as he gets to know the system, to get to know his duties as well as the county duties. And I just think it'll be a real good time for the county and for these positions that are turning over.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions from the audience, we are gonna go to the final statement. And since Mary started, Al, you get to start in your final statement. Thank you.
Well, again, I just thank everybody for being here and to listening to us. There's a lot of concerns in the county. There's a lot of concerns that haven't even brought up here in this last 45 minutes. I just urge all of you to get out there and dig around a little bit, and see which candidate you think would best fit the need for this county position, because that's really what we're doing. We're throwing out our resumes out there to fill a position, a very important position, a position that has the oversight of the money that you folks have generously put into the county coffers, and it should be spent in the way that it's supposed to be spent. I believe that, for myself, I have a vast, vast experience in different areas that would fulfill the job quite nicely. I have the passion to get out there and to do the work, to meet the people, to listen to the people, to answer those phone calls that when they call me, that I'll answer, or to drive down to Holly and talk to the gentleman, talk to the gentleman that asked the county commissioner to come down there and to look at one of his problems before they voted on it, and he simply said, I don't have the time for that. You know, it's important, if it's important enough for that person to drive or to ask you to come down and look at the position, even though it may not be your district that voted you in, you still have the obligation to fulfill that commitment for the county. And I believe that I can do that. I have the time to do it. I have the experience to do it. And I just would thank you for your vote on the upcoming election on the 14th. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mary, your final statement?
Thank you. Clay County is where I chose to raise my twin, now adult, children. Twenty-three years ago, when I began my teaching career, or teaching position out at Dilworth, Glendon-Felton with seventh grade American history. My background in education of myself includes a bachelor's in psychology, one in geography, and also secondary teaching with graduate-level work in behavioral special education, and also curriculum and instruction. Before teaching, I was in broadcast advertising and journalism. As a resident of Clay County for almost a quarter of a century, I've seen so many changes. An increase in both volume and severity of law enforcement, a change in county population, and the need for continuing economic growth. Many thanks to the League, to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and to the library for hosting us tonight. I feel the commission needs a fresh look at the needs of our county through the eyes and expertise of someone who's actually working in the trenches every day, who not only sees the great results, but also the unfulfilled needs. In my 25 years of teaching, I've seen the great role and worked with the Clay County services provided to not just our young people, but to all of our residents. Public health, road maintenance, law enforcement, social services, flood protection, food programs, protecting our water supplies, and even a summer fair, to name a few. As I mentioned earlier, no one person can take credit for everything, but only as part of a great team can those results make such a vast difference. As the oldest of six kids, I learned to negotiate at a young age. And with that and a solid strategic plan, Clay County's future can only be better. And after my years of service as a council member, I decided to make the move to the county so I could do more good for more people. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes our forum. That concludes our forum. We will take a short break, and at about 7:15, we will start with the sheriff candidates. Tony, our friend from MCAM, told me that this recording will be rebroadcast on the cable channels and on YouTube tomorrow, starting tomorrow evening. Thank you all for being here. Don't go away. We got four more people coming. Welcome again. Welcome again to, not to take these away. We now have four sheriff candidates for Clay County, and they're all here eager to answer your questions. We will use the same format. First of all, they will all give an opening statement. Then we'll take questions from the audience, of which this time I have several. And then each of the candidates will provide us with a closing statement. We do not ask individual candidates questions particular to that candidate. There was one submitted, the League policy is the question has to be written so that all candidates have an answer, have an opportunity to answer. We will not ask it of one particular person. Just to get that and everybody's little beep on it. We will start. I start on this side. It will go across. You get the first one. You get the second. You get the third. You get the fourth. We come around and go. So your opening statement, Mr. Mark Empting.
All right. Thanks for having us here tonight. I do appreciate it. I am Mark Empting, currently running for Clay County Sheriff. I've been with the sheriff's office for the past 16 years. I have 21 years total law enforcement experience here in Clay County. I'm originally from Dilworth. I'm a local, homegrown boy. I've lived in Clay County or in Dilworth area, Dilworth-Moorehead area, my entire life. Currently assigned to the patrol division with the sheriff's office as the patrol lieutenant, where I currently manage the day-to-day operations of that division and deputies. I'm responsible to supervise the training of the newly hired deputies, as well as administering some grant requests. I'm also assistant emergency manager for the sheriff's office, where there's a lot of planning that goes into things that we do with projects. And I'm also on the Dilworth Fire Department, where I've been doing that for the past 26 years. And I currently serve as the Dilworth Fire Chief. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I think my time is gonna be up here just shortly, so I will pass it along.
Thank you. Mark Hendrickson.
Thanks. Thanks for coming tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting us. My name's Mark Hendrickson. I went to Concordia College, and that's how I got introduced to the Fargo-Moorehead area. I met my wife at Concordia. She's a Morehead Spud. And after college, I went on and pursued my law enforcement career. I started as a narcotics investigator. I went from there to the Bureau of Criminal Investigations as a special agent, focusing on homicides and narcotics. And then from there, I went to BCA as a homicide investigator. I also currently am the drug court coordinator in Fargo, licensed in both states. And I've also been a trainer of law enforcement officers for 10 years, specializing in interview and interrogation and narcotics. And I've held public office, and I'm very active in the community with nonprofits, and currently president of our church council of a local church in Morehead. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Hicks.
Thank you, Les. Especially thank you for the League of Women Voters to give us this opportunity to speak tonight. It's very important to meet the candidates. Also, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and the Morehead Public Library. My name is Jason Hicks. I'm running for sheriff of Clay County. I'm a lifelong resident of Clay County, with the exception of my time serving overseas with the Army. I've been a detective for the past 10 years for the Clay County Sheriff's Office. I've worked every case from homicide to burglary, theft, about any type of felony-type case, investigation, I've worked it. It's given me a very broad level of experience that I'm gonna bring to the table. I've held a leadership position since the age of 19 as a private first class in the U.S. Army. I've held positions as a squad leader, infantry platoon sergeant. And then, after my discharge, I became very active in the veteran community, where I was the leader of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Club in Morehead, then Dilworth, for the past 25 years. I'm a firm believer in a strong community and a transparent sheriff's office, and we are accountable to the people. Thank you again for coming tonight.
Thank you. Scott Steffes.
Thank you also for inviting us to this forum tonight. I am also a resident of Clay County. I grew up in Clay County, in the Glendon-Dilworth area. Grew up on a farm for 15 years of my life. I've had 27 years of law enforcement experience, two years in Wilmer, working undercover narcotics, 25 years currently in the Clay County Sheriff's Office. At the sheriff's office, I've been a field training officer, where I train new deputies in. I've been a canine handler for 13 years. I've worked as patrol for 20, or I'm sorry, 20 years, or 22 years of my career. Currently, I'm in the warrants and transports division within the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Most recently, I've been on the Morehead School Board for the last five years, and I am currently the chair of the Morehead School Board. Working with the Morehead School Board, I've learned how to provide leadership with the school district, and help with policymaking, and continuing to make the school district grow into the great community it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're gonna go on to the questions. And I have the privilege, I guess, of combining questions if the questions are quite similar. So I'm gonna combine two of them here. There are two programs involved with the Clay County Sheriff's Office. The needle exchange program, or the needle turn-in program, I can't remember his correct title. It's called Needle Exchange here, is one of the programs run by the sheriff's department. And another is the jail ministry program that is run by a group of volunteers. So, starting with Mark, would you say whether you support or don't support? Think of those two programs.
The two programs that you're talking about, thanks for the question, by the way. First of all, as far as the needle exchange program goes, I'm in favor of that for one particular reason, is my platform is based on community safety and keeping the community safe. And if we have needles out there, whether they're in a residence, whether they're on the street, I've seen them in a trash can at Walmart in Morehead, that's a dangerous situation, especially with young kids running around. I'm a very big proponent of the needle exchange. Second of all, jail chaplains ministry. As I said, I'm the drug court coordinator in Fargo right now. I work on a weekly, sometimes daily basis with the jail chaplains ministry in Fargo. Currently, I was invited by the ministry to attend a leadership training summit, which is actually going on right now, started yesterday and finishes up tomorrow. I've spoken to the jail chaplains ministry group in Morehead, and told them that I'm in full support, and I think we should have an open-door policy, because I think they're a very effective group to the people. We're trying to get help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jason?
Okay. I am also in favor of both programs that are provided. The needle exchange program is important because these people already have an addiction and a disease. By providing them with clean needles, it'll hopefully prevent other diseases being spread. HIV, Hep C, diseases such as that their blood borren, that'll be shared by dirty needles. So, to me, it makes sense. They're already fighting one disease. We don't need to pile it on anymore and hopefully get them help. The jail ministry is an excellent program that I've seen work firsthand. There was a woman that just happened to actually rob the VFW one night, and I sent her away to prison. Well, she was killed in North Dakota, and the jail ministry provided her service. And it was a very much heartfelt firsthand thing that they really care about these people, and in turn made me care more about what they're doing. We have to give these people hope. When they're incarcerated, there's not a lot for them to do, and they run out of options. They start thinking of different ways they can hopefully help themselves. And the jail ministry definitely provides that platform for them, and gives them some respite from what's going on in their life, and hopefully gives them hope.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you. Like Jason said, I'm in favor of both items, the needle exchange program and the ministries. To help with the drugs being used within the county, and the diseases that are spread from the common use of these needles, we need to help out with that and stop that. There's not much more we can say about that. That's what we need to do. And we are here to serve the people and help the people continue to keep clean needles out there for them in order to help them from not spreading the diseases around. As far as the jail ministry goes, I would fully endorse the jail ministry with other programs in order to help these people. We have found when individuals are in a cycle, such as using drugs, that cycle also brings up mental health issues. It also brings up thefts within our county. And I feel with the jail ministries program, along with other programs within the jail to help with chemical dependency, we could bring down some of the mental health issues that we're having within our county, and also bring down some of the thefts that we're having within our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. I as well am in favor of those programs. I think it's good that we have those programs out there to stop spreading the diseases. The one thing I would like to see us do is those that do have the needle exchange program, see if we can reach out a little bit further with them to help them with their addiction, to see if there's something we can do to help them fight it and help them overcome their addiction. That's the same thing that with our drug take-back program that we have. There, we're not getting a lot of illegal drugs. We bring in a lot of unused prescription medications, and we have five drug take-back vaults in Clay County. They're all in our rural police departments. And I think that's a good thing that we do as well. As far as the jail ministry goes, it's a very good program. I recently met with some clients with the program, as well as some leaders within that program, and they talked about some of the concerns that they had with some problems in the jail as far as being allowed in there. They also have an issue with the short term. It's very tough for them to be able to reach out to the folks that are having the problems, because they're in our jails for a short term. Our facility is not long-term, and that's where they really have their luck. So, being able to get somebody in there immediately, helping somebody with their addiction, and being able to get them right away, I think would be more beneficial to get those folks off of the drugs.
Thank you. Jason, you get the next question. I've heard retired Chief Ebinger talk about this on numerous occasions. What will your approach be if elected sheriff in addressing the opioid crisis?
That is a huge, huge question. It's gonna be hard to put that in two minutes' worth. I'm a firm believer that this opioid crisis that we have has to be addressed as a multidisciplinary, multi-team approach. Law enforcement by itself, we're not gonna do it. Courts by themselves, we're not gonna do it. We need to involve social services, ministries, healthcare professionals, as these are kids that are dying from this opioid addiction. It's absolutely tragic when you see 22, 23, 24-year-olds dying from trying a drug and ODing on the spot. It also makes it dangerous for us, law enforcement, that have to respond to this. Say, for example, fentanyl. I never in my years of law enforcement would have guessed that something the size of a pinhead would kill me dead if I was not wearing the protective gear. You see a pile of powder on a table, you're not sure what it is. We have taken numerous precautions now, and it's part of our training curriculum, to be aware of this. It's very far-reaching, every aspect in our community, social, economic differences between people, doesn't matter, rich, poor. I've seen it all with these kids who are dying. It also directly has an effect on other crime throughout the county. People are committing burglaries, robberies, thefts to pay for their addiction. It's a huge problem. I could say easily 80% of my casework involving theft of property involves directly drugs, not necessarily opioids, but drugs in general. They're all connected. It's an incredibly difficult situation that we're in. But I feel as sheriff, it's gonna be imperative to be a leader in this program and take a forward approach to gather up this collaborative effort to hopefully stem the tide of the opioid crisis.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you. This is a question that we as candidates have been having over and over again, every single debate that we've had. What to do with the opioid crisis. There's several things I would like to do as a sheriff for the opioid crisis. Number one, I'd like to get another canine on the street to help with finding the drugs that are out on the street, the people the people that are transporting those drugs within our county, within our cities, bringing those in. Number two, I would like to, uh, also have training for the officers that are working the streets in order to help them observe and see what's going on when these guys are transporting these dope, the dope, as I call it, around the, the county. We call that pipeline training. I know we've had it in the past in our department. I think it's something that we need to continue on. We also need to go into our jail, and we need to look for people who are wanting to get out of this, um, cycle that they're in, and give them programs to help them try and get out of the cycles. I've been transporting prisoners throughout the state of Minnesota for the last two years, and the number-one thing they say to me, it's not just opioids, it's drugs, it's alcohol. I wanna get off drugs and alcohol. And in order to help them get off the drugs and alcohol in our jail systems, that'll keep them out of the jail, plus, it's gonna keep them from committing robberies and thefts and burglaries, as Jason was talking about, within the county. And that'll help out with our crime, crime rate within Clay County and Moorhead specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I think with this, I think we have to look at the education and prevention and enforcement with this. Um, it, the education starts with a young age. We currently do the DARE Program with our SROs in rural Clay County, which is a very good program. But the problem with that is, is they do the program in fifth grade, and then we kinda forget about them after that. So, I think it's rather important that we also have our SROs starting to go into that, uh, junior high to high school age classes. Those are the kids that are in there, they're, it's their formative years, it's the years that we really gotta start, uh, educating them in, in the drug use and maybe preventing that. Um, the other way to prevention is that, is when we do have somebody that is addicted to the opioids, we reach out not only to, it's not only law enforcement that's involved with this, it's our, it's our probation, it's social service, it's our clergy. It's, um, it's all different kinds of people. It's, it's even our, our school administration that we have to get involved to try and figure out a way to combat this. We have a Clay County Jail Ministry. Our Clay County Jail Ministry, I think, has done a fantastic job in this. Um, I have spoke to some clients personally, and they have spoken very highly of the ministry and what it has done for them in their life. And I think in order to combat this, we need to definitely look at the education, prevention, and also enforcement side of it. That side of it should be a rather small side because we need to start looking at the education prevention more. For the enforcement side, I would, uh, want a, one of our deputies who's on the Street Crimes Task Force to join, um, the U.S. Marshals Task Force as well. That way, when they're out there, uh, taking part in some of these, uh, more violent arrests, um, their overtime is paid for. So, it would be kind of a cost savings to Clay County where we're not having to flip the bill for their overtime. Their overtime is getting paid for by the federal government, and it's a task force that we could join tomorrow if we wanted to, and I think it's a very good task force that we do that.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. Um, as far as the opioid crisis goes, um, it's gonna take a concerted effort by multiple agencies to deal with this problem. Clay County is in the middle of growth, the metro area is in the middle of growth, and I'm proposing a two-pronged approach to this problem. The enforcement side, the individuals bringing these drugs into our communities, they can go to prison as far as I'm concerned, okay? The second side, the side where we need to work more and more diligently on, is a rehabilitative side. The mayor's blue ribbon, there's programs out there, there's programs currently in our jails, but we need to step it up because it's doing two things. It's causing an uptick in crimes, and it's causing for taxpayers to pay the price. To incarcerate someone costs approximately forty thousand dollars a year, okay? If we can keep them out and keep them productive, we can save that money. But the other part that people need to understand about the opioid crisis is it's multi-generational. It goes from generation to generation. And if we can correct mom and dad and get them down the right track, the kids will see that, and hopefully, they'll take a turn and be more productive. I think that's key, is a rehabilitation aspect. And I also believe that we need more programs in the jail at a cost, and that cost cannot stop at Clay County and the residents. I'm willing to go to St. Paul, talk to other sheriffs in northern Minnesota, and some of that money that's staying in the Twin Cities needs to come up here, and they need to recognize we have a problem too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Scott. I'm gonna stay on this train of thought because there were... Jason started it. Thank you, Carol. I got my helper right here. Uh, staying on the same train of thought, Scott, what kinds of other community outreach programs would you sponsor? We've talked about the three of them, the ministry, the opioid, and the needles, so... What other community outreach programs would you, uh, sponsor?
As far as drugs and alcohol, or...
Anything.
Anything?
Anything. This is, this is an open-ender.
Okay. I personally would like to, um, also get involved more with the DARE Program. I'd like to start the DARE Program for education for alcohol and drugs in the schools earlier than fifth and sixth grade, or fourth and fifth grade. Students nowadays are learning at a younger and younger age of what's going on with alcohol, drugs, opioids, whatever you wanna talk about. And I feel that we need to start those programs a little earlier to get them started and to get them to understand that these things are not good for them. We do not wanna use these drugs or alcohol. Uh, work that up into your, your elementary and your high school years, and keep those programs and that education going. Education is the key, as Mark said. We need to educate the students. Once we educate the students, we break the cycles, and the cycles are what we're trying to get rid of, and that's the use of the alcohol or drugs. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark?
You know, one program that I would really like to sponsor and help out, it's, uh, it's our Rural First Responder Program. Uh, right now, in rural Clay County, we have some issues in our northern part of the county with getting rural first responders to these emergency medical calls during the day. It's no fault of their own, they are obviously working in the Fargo-Moorhead area, so they're not able to respond from there to get to these calls. So, we have to do something to help those, those first responder organizations out, whether it's working with the county board to be able to fund possibly, uh, an ambulance during the daytime hours, somewhere up in our northern tier where we're having some issues getting rural first responders out there during the day. Or whether it's us as the Sheriff's Office taking on a role similar to our posse with rural first responders to call them, um, and they do it over in the Cass County side, a QRU, which is a quick response unit. And a quick response unit would be somebody that is able to resp, somebody with FM ambulance that is able to respond first, start their emergency medical aid, and then wait for the ambulance to get there. I think that's a very good program that we really need to look into because there are some medical calls that are going unanswered by some of the rural first responder groups, and it's taxing other first responder groups that have to respond, uh, into other areas to, um, to, to go to those calls. So, I think that's a program that we need to definitely start to better our community and make it a safer place for the folks up there.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Les. Um, two things I'd like to see happen if I were to become Sheriff. Number one, I think, uh, community policing, and what I mean by that is, is visibility and having our deputies get out into the communities and visiting with folks, finding out what their concerns are. More visibility would be key for me. The second thing I'd like to see is, is we have an, an increase in new Americans in our communities. And what I'd like to see happen is, is to have a deputy trained and assigned to, to help work with these individuals. 'Cause sometimes I work with these individuals on a weekly, if not daily, basis, and a lot of times, they don't understand how our laws work at times. And I think building a relationship with that group is very important at this time, especially with the growth we're seeing in Clay County and more so the metro area. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I'll, uh, talk about two programs that I'm very much interested in. There's one called the F-Five Program. Strangely enough, it is a group of multi-felons who have been to prison and have F-Fived, restarted their life. That's what it all stands for. They are convinced that by providing support for their peers of not getting back into the lifestyle that they were in when they get out, they realized by themselves that they can't go to the back to the life that they had before 'cause it'll get them back to the addiction, it'll get them back to the crime, it'll get them back to the prison. Non-stop cycle. I, uh, met with a few of them today, and it's just amazing how they realize that. I've been an advocate for this same program without having a name for it. If you can get these people out of the continuous cycle of getting out of prison, going back with their friends, going back to their old ways, it just compounds their problems. So, that's a program I would love to see introduced to the jail. Um, they're a great group of guys, and, uh, they're believers. They firmly believe in what they're doing, and I back them fully. It's, it's really great, and actually, uh, some of them knew me from prior, having sent them away. So, it's, uh, it's an interesting collaboration. The second thing I'd like to address is our Posse Program. We used to have a very active Posse Program. It kinda just is not as active as it used to be. I think we have an immense talent pool out there of volunteers. How do you get better than having someone that's a volunteer? You save taxpayer money, and those people genuinely wanna be there to do the job that you're asking of them. I, uh, I'm a firm believer in volunteerism, and the Posse could fill not all law enforcement duties, but some. Say, for example, traffic control at a checkpoint or something like that. Parade route security, things like that. We could fill that with volunteers who would, uh, gladly do it on their dime, their gas, saving the taxpayers some money that we can use in other programs. Also, would like to add the, uh, Mounted Posse. I'm a fan of horses, so I guess, uh, I think that'd be pretty neat to have. And as a rural Sheriff's Department, I think it'd be a great asset to us. If you've ever tried to search a cornfield for a person, you know that horses would be very beneficial to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
I've already answered this question.
Oh. We've done all four of you. Okay. Great. That was my fault, huh? Now, we're one, one and one. We have, we have two questions here that are quite similar, and, uh, I'm, I'm gonna kind of merge them together. This is about your background. We'd know, like, uh, we'd like to know what other law enforcement organizations you have worked for. Uh, why did you leave? What did you learn from those organizations in order to make you better in law enforcement? I think I've got everything from both of them. So, where have you previously worked? Where have you previously worked? Uh, why did you leave, and, uh, what did you learn from that experience? Mark, you're first.
Well, I did work, um, previously for a short time over at the Becker County Sheriff's Office. I was hired there for about four months. Uh, when I started there, I was, uh, given keys to a squad car and a county map and some forms and said, "Go to work." I'll be honest, I had no idea what I was doing. I shouldn't have been in a car, I was a danger to myself and probably to some other people. I shouldn't have been there. It was ridiculous, um, that they did that. I was part to blame at that. I was asked to, uh, I was told that they, uh, that I wasn't working out, and they asked me to leave. And I left, I had a little bit of rebuttal, uh, letter for them for the fact of I thought that I was trying to go out there, do the right thing and do a good job, and the fact that I wished they would've had a training program, because I think a training program would've, would've helped greatly. When you're a twenty-one-year-old kid and you're throwing keys to a squad car and told to go do the job, you have no idea what you're doing, and you need to kinda learn, you know, learn from others. I've worked for the Glendon Police Department under Chief Cecil Johnson, he was a great man. I thoroughly enjoyed working for Cecil, and I did work for the Dilworth Police Department for some time. Uh, while working there, I'm gonna be upfront, transparent with you folks. Um, I made a stupid mistake when I was a kid. I had a lapse in judgment. As a rookie cop, it was dumb, I shouldn't have done it. And, um, I'm not gonna go into the details of it, but I'm gonna tell you that it was not criminal, it was not ethical. Uh, I'm sorry, it was not criminal, it was not legal, it was, uh, it was very embarrassing. And, uh, it was a, uh, it, it was an ethical check for me, is what it was. It put me, uh, on the path of I need to put my nose to the grindstone, I need to go to work. And I can't do that stuff again, and it made me a better person for where I'm, where I'm at right now today. I was hired by the Sheriff's Office after, after that incident. I've been through two promotional processes where I have done a very good job. I have gone to work daily to make this place a great place to work and live, and I learned my lessons from each and every one of my mistakes that I made. And, uh, I, I would be more than happy to talk to people in the future about that if they wish to, to do that.
Thank you. Uh, Mark?
Yes, um, as far as my career goes, I, I started out back in nineteen ninety-eight as a narcotics investigator for the Stutzman County Task Force. Did that for about six years, and then, if you will, I was hired by the Bureau of Criminal Investigations as Special Agent, which was a promotion. Did that for about three years, and then I applied. I'm originally from Minnesota, and my wife's from Moorhead. I applied with BCA in Minnesota, and I was hired as a Special Agent with them. BCA and BCI, I worked narcotics and homicides mainly. And when you work those type of positions, you gotta learn to be resourceful, collaborative, and deal with high-stress situations. I left BCA after about ten months because it wasn't the right fit for my family. I did what was best for Ginger and my kids. So, I resigned from that position and moved back to where my family was living in Devil's Lake, and was almost immediately picked up by Department Corrections as a parole officer. And believe it or not, I've, I've always wanted to be a sheriff, and working ten years of enforcement and now ten years of corrections, it actually fits really well with what the sheriff needs to be able to do. I have a skill set that can oversee the Correctional Center, which it's pivotal time with the new Correctional Center, and I also can work with the deputies, investigators, working on the streets because I have done that as well. What I'd like to do is take my twenty-plus years of experience, draw on that work collaboratively, and come in with, because I'm the only one running, not from the Clay County Sheriff's Department, I can come in with a clean, clear, objective approach and make some changes, and sometimes, changes creates opportunities. Maybe there won't be many, maybe there'll be a lot. I don't know. But I'm gonna come in and give a clear, objective look at how things are done, especially with the new Correctional Center. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason?
Okay, um, as I said before, I started with the Dilworth Police Department as a part-time patrol officer. From there, I went to work for the West Fargo Police Department, where I worked a short period of time in patrol and the majority of my time in narcotics. I've done undercover narcotics work, I've worked with informants, I've worked federal cases, state cases, local cases, pretty much every type of drug case you could think of. I have done it at one time or another. It's interesting work, but I'll tell you what, if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing in drug work, you are gonna get burnt out. That is not a job I wanna go back to anytime in the near future, but I gained a huge amount of experience with that. Um, from writing search warrants to court affidavits, um, tractors for vehicles, things like that. I just, I got a lot of experience running and gunning, as we called it, for all those years. One of the great things that I was able to glean from that is the connections with other agencies. I can pick up my phone at any time, day or night, and call an agency, you name it, and I will have a personal connection with someone at there. From my years working as an investigator, I have connections in every federal, state, and local agency. Cass County, Fargo PD, you name it, and it goes past there. If you go out to, uh, western North Dakota, I know people out there too. I, uh, I was able to gather a lot of connections by my time working for the West Fargo Police Department as a narcotics detective. Dilworth Police Department, uh, the reason I left West Fargo, I got hired by Clay County. I couldn't work both, even though it'd be need to be licensed in both states, uh, that wasn't agreeable. Uh, same thing with Dilworth, since I was picked up full-time by the Sheriff's Office, I resigned from Dilworth, and they were fine with that. But, uh, Dilworth PD gave me a great start and, uh, hopefully continue on as my, uh, future of Sheriff, bringing many years of leadership experience and firsthand work experience to the table.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Les. Um, I'm gonna start out, I actually, I, I figure this is, the start of my career is working for the, or working with the Glendon Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad. That's when I decided I wanted to get into the law enforcement, um, end of it. So, in nineteen eighty-eight, I went down to Alex, went to school there, graduated from Alex with a two-year degree, got my first job as a, as a deputy, as a bailiff up in the Clay County Courthouse, working with a, a suit and tie, no gun, no badge, just sitting in the courtroom with Judge Weir. Um, from there, I got hired on with the Wilmer or Candy Ojai County Sheriff's Office. And I worked undercover narcotics down there for two and a half years. Working down there, like Jason said, you learned to work collaboratively with federal, state and local agencies. Um, I worked with the US Customs, I worked with the DEA, I've worked with the BCA, I've worked wiretaps. I've worked OCDEF cases with the federal government. And in one year and, and down in Wilmer, we worked over 100-plus, uh, search warrants for narcotics down there. From there, I got hired on with the Clay County Sheriff's Office from Larry Costello. I've been working here ever since for the last 25 years. It's been a great opportunity to work for the Clay County Sheriff's Office. When I graduated, that was my goal to work for the Clay County Sheriff's Office. Working for the Clay, Clay County Sheriff's Office and the citizens of Clay County has been an honor and a privilege for the last 25 years. I truly and sincerely love being a servant for them and going out and talking to the people in the community, stopping in and visiting with people. If a farmer's out plowing a field, I like to stop and talk to him and see how it's going. That's, that's the thing I did. I loved to be on the gravel roads, driving the gravel roads. Um, some of the things I learned is just to work collaboratively with other agencies. That's, that's what I learned in all the stuff that I've been doing throughout these years, the last 27 years of law enforcement. Was just getting to know people. The more you know people, the more you're gonna learn from them and you're gonna learn about the bad people that are out there and you know where they're at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark, this may be a relatively short answer question. A person out there says, "Other than law enforcement training, what is your level of education?" I believe they, they wanna know what you've done education-wise after you finished high school.
Thank you, Les. Um, other than my law enforcement training, I attended Warroad High School in Warroad, Minnesota. Graduated from there. I went on to Concordia College in Morehead and received my Bachelor of Arts degree in political science with a minor in music. Believe it or not, I sang in the Concordia Choir back in the day. After that, I went on to the academy in Devil's Lake, Lake Region State College, received my certification. And once I was licensed and started working, we all go through ongoing continuing education. I got certified as an instructor and I taught at the academies in North Dakota, both interview and interrogation and narcotics. I'm considered an expert in the court of law when it comes to narcotics. I've also had numerous trainings involving supervision level as far as being a supervisor from Northwest Training Institute and from BCI, um, agencies like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Okay, well, a little bit of my education background. I graduated from Glendon Felton High School before it was Dilworth Glendon Felton High School. So somewhat dates me. From there, I, uh, attended the Fort Benning School for Boys at, uh, Fort Benning, Georgia. I joined the Army. Um, I learned, I attended several courses, obviously basic infantryman's course and advanced infantry training. And then throughout my Army career, I had, uh, several leadership courses that I took. I was an instructor for a long period of time at, uh, at those leadership courses just to try to impose, or not impose, to show people what it means to be a leader and how important it is to be in that position. Cause the people below you are looking up to you and they're looking for answers. But at the end of the day, the most important thing you can do as a leader is teach them to do your job. We're all replaceable. And that never became clearer to me than in the Army. Uh, after my service in the Army, I went to college. I graduated from Morehead State with a degree in criminal justice and I have a minor in social psychology and, uh, social programs. From there, I went to Alexandria Tech, their summer law enforcement skills program. They basically have a condensed program of the two-year program. They fit it into 10 weeks of law enforcement-specific training for those of you that have a four-year degree. And as, uh, Mark had said, we have mandated training that we do. I have over 750 hours of law enforcement training, advanced, basic, pretty much you name it. And pretty much any type of course you can think of with specialties in narcotics investigation, general investigation and crime scene type activity. So I have gained a lot of education, but I still believe in furthering education and continuing with that.
Thank you. And I thought this was gonna be a short answer. Scott?
It's not a short answer.
It's not a short answer. You go for it.
Do you, I wanna clarify, do you wanna know about our law enforcement training? Cause I mean, we have all.
It's, it's an open, it's an open question.
Well, we'll start out after high school. I also graduated from Glendon Felton, um, graduated in 1985. Went to, when I started with the Glendon Volunteer and Fire Squad and Rescue Squad, I went to EMT training. And I was also a trainer, uh, for the Glendon Fire Department. Uh, went through all phases of the, to become a fireman within the Glendon Fire Department. From there, I went on to the Alexandria Technical College where I graduated with a bachelor's. Yeah, no, associate degree. Thank you. Not a bachelor's, associate degree in law enforcement. From there, like I said, I had a lot of training in narcotics, undercover narcotics, narcotics, uh, investigation. Uh, went on with the Clay County Sheriff's Office, numerous training. Every three years, we have to have at least 48 hours of training. I, I don't think I've ever been under 80 to 100 hours of training when I, uh, go to renew my license for law enforcement. Uh, most recently though, I've been training a lot with the Minnesota School Board Association, learning how to make policies. Uh, learning how to, um, be a leader within the district, learning how to do superintendent evaluations. Work on union contracts and negotiate union contracts. There are just multiple types of training. I've had over 100 hours of training with the Minnesota School Board Association. And as far as working with leadership roles for the school board. So that's been my training throughout the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mark?
Thank you. I actually graduated from DGF High School. I was the first year to graduate DGF in 1992. So that was fun. So after, uh, after DGF, I, I took a year off. I drove school bus actually for the DGF School District. And that was a good time, being able to relate to the kids a little bit and, um, it was, it was, it was a good experience for me to do that. After that, I went to Alexandria Technical College as well. I, uh, got my Associate of Arts degree in law enforcement. Just like the other gentleman here, I have taken several law enforcement trainings to maintain my license. And it's generally, you need the 48 hours, you take more than that. Um, I have taken a class called DRE, which stands for Drug Recognition Expert. That was a six-week-long class in the cities that I took, uh, to become a drug recognition expert. And what that was is if an officer would stop somebody that they felt they were impaired by something other than alcohol, I would come in and I would do an evaluation on that person to try and determine what drug category they were impaired by, either a stimulant, cannabis or something on that line. I've also attended some more recent trainings, uh, through the BCA and the Sheriff's Association for Leadership. I went through the Sheriff's Association for assigned supervisor training, along with the BCA's supervision and management training and their leadership and police organization's training, which was, that was a three-week-long training at the BCA, which was a fantastic training as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, you get the, right, you started it, right, Mark?
Correct.
Thank you. I got it, girl? Okay. Uh, this is an interesting question. I moderated these forums before and I don't think I've ever seen this question. And it was, it's written as a yes or no question. So I'm gonna change it because I will not let you say yes. Okay. Social media, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, uh, how you feel about using social media and what do you think of statements made by individuals on social media? And what impact does that have on the community? Okay? You guys understand the question? Good. Jason, you're up.
Well, it's, uh, funny you, uh, I'm the first one to answer this. As probably a lot of you know, I got into a little trouble over something I said over social media. I was, uh, out of line and quoted a movie. But I've gotten past that. I think social media is the wave of the future. You can communicate with the masses. Anyone that's following my, um, campaign, I use it a lot. And you get out the word to a lot of people in a lot of different ways. A lot of people, uh, enjoy that. Some people take things of what you say out of context and it does happen. I'm fully aware of that. If anybody in this room is aware of that, it's me. But I think it's a very good, positive platform that can be used for good. And for example, amber alerts or we're missing an elderly person with dementia or something like that. You talk about a wildfire starting. That gets the word out faster than any news media organization can do out there. Cause people are constantly, as we know, walking around on their phones, getting updates. It's a, a very powerful tool. Tool that needs to be used accordingly as, uh, I firsthand know. But it's a very powerful thing and I'm all for it. I think it's a very good thing to have and it's accessible to everyone.
Thank you. Scott? And Jason, I did not have any clue. Scott?
Thank you. Um, technology, everybody has it, yeah. Wow, technology. Um, I think it's a very useful tool, but I also feel it can be very dangerous also. We have a lot of stuff going on, uh, in technology. We have bullying that goes on with technology. We have, um, students that are being harmed or feel they're being harmed because of technology and other students. But to me, it is a useful tool because you can get things out very quickly. Uh, the other day, we had an amber alert go off, um, for a ch- a child up in Grand Forks. And it kinda amazed me that we had like 40 phones going off at the same time in the one room. And everybody was looking around like, "Where's the siren? Where's the storm coming from?", you know? But it was an amber alert. And I think that is awesome that we can get this out in such a hurry to help people. Cause the quicker we get that stuff, that information out, the quicker we're able to try and find them as far as law enforcement. Um, as far as Facebook goes, Facebook is a great tool for the sheriff's office. We can get information out for if there's burglaries out in the county, if we have thefts going on. We can let people know that this stuff's going on. So we have communication with the public. So they can look at our Facebook page and say, "Hey, you know what? Uh, I live close to where that last theft was at and maybe I better watch my neighbor's place." And I think that's the key to, to everything is us as neighbors, getting to know our neighbors and knowing when somebody, something strange is going on so we can call the sheriff's office or the police department and let us know to come out and check that out. So thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. I think social media is a good thing. It's a very useful tool for our sheriff's office that we should continue to use. I didn't have Facebook up until I got into the election and then I started a Facebook page. So I'm still kinda trying to learn the social media, uh, type aspect of things. But not everybody necessarily has it. There's a lot of people that don't have social media, they don't have Facebook. And it's important to get out and make those face-to-face, face-to-face contacts as well and getting out into your local communities and doing that. Because a lot of people don't believe in it. Do I think it's a good thing? Uh, I do cautiously and, and correctly. And when I say that cautiously and correctly, I mean, stuff you post on there has to be, um, has to, has to be appropriate. Because as Jason rightfully admitted, you can say some things sometimes in the heat of the battle that you just don't like to say and you wish you could've taken back and we've all been there. Uh, we're human, humans make mistakes and that's just, it's a part of life. So I think it's a, it's a good thing, but I think we have to get out still and do the face-to-face contacts and talk to our community members.
Thank you. Mark?
I'm gonna take a little different approach to this. Um, I'm gonna talk about two things when it comes to so- social media technology in general. As we've all said up here, we have continuing education. And as we can see the way society's turned, um, technology plays a big part in every one of our lives right now, constantly evolving. And I think it's important for the sheriff's department to stay up on technology and the deputies and the correctional officers to be trained and to be savvy to an extent as to how the technology and social media works. The other part I wanna talk about is as far as social media, it is a great tool, resource for any law enforcement agency to use. Whether you're sending out an amber alert, whether you're sending out flooded roads. It's a good communication piece for any law enforcement agency. And also it helps with community policing and building relationships with the residents of Clay County. So I, I'm, I'm a big proponent of, we need to stay on top of it though as far as how it's handled. Thanks.
Thank you. Now we'll go into closing statements and Scott, you get to go first.
I get to start first, huh?
Yes, you do. And you'll notice that each of you had the same number of firsts.
Well, thank you, Les. In closing, I'd just like to say, it would be an honor and a privilege to be your next sheriff of Clay County. As I stated, I've worked here for 27 years. This is a goal, or I'm sorry, 25 years. This is a goal of mine to become the next sheriff of Clay County. With that being said, the, the stuff that I've learned from prior sheriffs, including Larry Klinehueson, Jim Fisher, Sheriff Costello, uh, Bill Burquist. Those things I've learned, um, on how to treat people and how to treat the employees within the county, that I think is the key. If you have a good or a great department to work for, you need to treat the employees right. And one thing is, I'm gonna listen to the employees. They're the ones out there on the street, they're the ones working with the people on the street. When they come in and say, "Hey, I think we got an idea here, let's try something", I'm gonna listen to them. Whether or not I agree with them, I can't tell you that, but I'm gonna listen to them. And if a citizen comes in to talk to me, I'm gonna listen to them. Whether or not I agree with them again, that's another story, but I'm gonna listen to them. So my door will always be open within the sheriff's office to talk and to have a cup of coffee and to listen. I am also gonna get out to the communities and get to know the people within the communities and be part of the community. And that's what I believe is the key to be in a good sheriff's office, is to be part of your communities, to be seen in the rural areas, to be seen in the towns. And that is what I am going to propose to the deputies when I become sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you. Well, being the current patrol lieutenant, I am aware of some of the issues that we have to do is, is to get out there. And I, I'm fully aware of that and our deputies are out there. They are traveling the county roads. Uh, currently have one deputy that has a squad car that has 60,000 miles on it and the car is one years old. Another guy just got rid of a car with 115,000 miles on it, that was three years old. So our deputies are definitely out there driving the roads. And I would definitely want them to do that and continue to do that. Be active in the traffic enforcement as well. It's the one thing that I always hear when I'm out in the community, out in the community, is the speed on certain coun- certain county roads. Well, we are gonna do something to try and fix that for our community members because we do have to listen to them. And I will continue to listen to them as I go to their community picnics. Um, I am currently the only one, uh, on the panel here that has leadership experience within the sheriff's office and also on the Dilworth Fire Department. I have 16 years at the sheriff's office, four of them as a supervisor in about a little over 18 months as an administrator. I've been part of several large projects within the sheriff's office and within Clay County. I'm very versed in working with other agencies and organizations, not only law enforcement, but also our dispatch centers and our fire department and our rural responder groups. Uh, I think I would be a very, uh, good asset to Clay County as the next Clay County Sheriff. And I would appreciate your support for that and thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you very much. Mark?
Thank you. Um, I guess I wanna close with, you know, I've set my career up for this opportunity and I've spent the time, the last three months, out in the communities, knocking on doors, talking to residents, citizens, wanting to know what their concerns are. And I've also let people know why I wanna run. I, I believe I bring a good skill set to the sheriff's department. Because the sheriff's department has to run a jail and they have to run the deputies on the street. I've done both. I've done a decade of over both. I'm a proven leader in the communities I've lived in, I've held public office. So I understand budgeting from a public official like a county commissioner's standpoint. Currently president of our church council, so I'm a proven leader. And my main objective outside of keeping the community safe is we need to work more on rehabilitation. We cannot incarcerate this problem away and it's gonna take effort from multiple agencies. And when I say rehabilitation, it starts with what I do now and what I've worked with. And there's three components that we can make this work. Some people may think I'm crazy, but I've seen it work, I've seen it in action. You need to, the people that need it, that, that want help, you need to get them support, hold them accountable and help them build structure in their life. And if you can do that, they start making good choices, productive members of society. And I think it's important that we work on that. And I think it's important that we work on that because of the new jail is going to offer a lot of opportunities for us to bring more programs into Clay County to help with the drug problem, which in turn creates an uptick in crime and problems for society in general. So I'd appreciate any support next Tuesday during the election and thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on tonight. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jason?
Okay, last but not least. Well, thank you for coming out tonight. As I said before, I feel that I have an immense amount of leadership and work experience to bring the Sheriff's Office forward. But I will never forget where I came from, nor will I forget those who are helping us with this battle that we're fighting in law enforcement. As a leader, you never ask your people to do something which you have not done yourself, nor would you be willing to do. You will not maintain double standards for others and not yourself. It is very important to show them that you have skin in this game, from our most newest higher deputy to our chief deputy. And I feel that I can bridge that gap having the vast amount of leadership experience that I have, both in peacetime and wartime through the military and through organizations, civic organizations, and volunteerism. I also have a level of education. I'm a firm believer in that and with that, that will help create diversity. One thing that I'd like to see us do with the Sheriff's Office is branch out, recruit more. And we do that not with so much the tech colleges, but the, the college college. You could have a degree in underwater basket weaving and still go to law enforcement skills. It'll create diversity. You know, everyone's like, law enforcement this, law enforcement that. You know, that's cool and everything. If I were to do it again, I would have got a degree in something else because really at the end of the day, it's who you are that makes a difference to these people. And having worked from the most basic, simple car stop to a homicide case, I can honestly say I've worked about every type of case imaginable with every agency imaginable, to include the IRS, as much as I hate to say that. I have worked with them and they have a law enforcement branch. Not many, not everyone knows that. But I thank the League of Women Voters for having us out tonight, beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and the Morehead Library for providing this great facility for us to have this discussion. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our evening's Candidates Forum. Please thank the candidates and go out next Tuesday.